So I think the rest of the public who was asked, you know, for notifications should also be notified if things have been added to the agenda after its initial release.
Your comments have been noted, Manager Cook.
Thank you.
I believe if there aren't any other changes to that, we could vote.
On the March 28th minutes, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Abstain.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
And lastly, in this section, I'd like to discuss the special meeting on March 28th. The Board of Managers met in closed session for the purpose of evaluating the performance of the District Administrator, Terry Jeffrey. The salient points of the evaluation are as follows. Managers evaluated Mr. Jeffrey as to six categories of his major accountabilities. One, with the Board of Managers, develop and adjust goals, programs, policies, projects, and priorities to ensure prudent use and management of water and related land resources in the district. Second, manage district activities to implement the district's goals and objectives through coordination with government agencies and supervision of district consultants, vendors, and contractors. Third, manage district budgets and finances to ensure that resources are available to accomplish district goals and objectives and to maintain financial stability. Fourth, represent the district and the community and support the board's similar efforts, demonstrating leadership that helps to achieve district goals and objectives. Five, perform related duties consistent with the role of District Administrator as directed by the board. And six, perform other duties as apparent or assigned. The managers reviewed and discussed the collective comments of all six of these accountability categories and general comments. Three managers rated Mr. Jeffrey's performance at five or outstanding on all six categories. One manager provided a rating of four or exceeds requirements in five of the six categories for an average rating of 4.25. One manager rated Mr. Jeffrey's performance as one or unacceptable in four categories and no rating in two categories for an average rating of .8. In combination, the average rating of all the managers was 4.27. That exceeds requirements. Based on this rating, Mr. Jeffrey's years of experience and the merit guidelines, the Board of Managers approved by vote of four to one a 6.25% salary increase to $115,394. So that concludes this section.
Oh, Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I have comments on that. I can do it now. We're at the manager's report. But I do it later. I'd like the audience to wait around and be available during my manager report. I have grave concerns about the methodology that was used during Mr. Jeffrey's review, including how it deviated from past practices. So I can do it now or I can wait.
I think, why don't we wait until you get to the manager report?
And again, thank you, and I hope everybody stands by and listens. Thank you.
All right. We're on to committee reports. The first committee report is the Audit and Finance Committee. Would we like to look at adopting the resolution first or after we've talked about all three?
After the documents was the intent.
Okay, sounds like a great idea. So first is the Audit and Finance Committee. Would anybody like to discuss that from the committee?
Pretty straightforward. I have submitted. If anybody has any questions. We did adjust administrative discretionary spending limits because we felt that needed to be raised. So that'll be the recommendation coming out of that committee. We did a review and edit of financial policies. So there was a bit of discussion on that, and those were the main highlights of what we covered.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Any questions?
Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I'm glad that Manager Crafton changed what she originally stated. That sounded like the committee had approved changes. And apparently, it's just a recommendation. If I understand that correctly, is that correct?
Recommendation to the board.
That is correct.
But, you know, Madam President, could you have Manager Crafton speak up? It's getting difficult to hear her.
All right, Jill, just move the mic a little bit closer for you.
Those are recommendations to the board. Thank you.
Yeah, great. That's much better. Thank you, Manager Crafton. I appreciate that. You know, I would like to see some justification for increasing any spending limits on that basis. Some data before we go wholesale, increase limits. Get the data, whether or not we ever exceeded the limits, whether caused any problems or so. Which case did it cause a problem? You know, et cetera. And so for the committee, though I have a question, have you have you developed or basically recommendations for the accounting and finance policies, certainly those that, you know, go into our governance manual as well as those upon which our audit is based?
We haven't finished our total review yet, but there, in reference to the discretionary spending, there was at least one occasion where administrator, I believe, had to put a large amount on his own credit card in order to make a transaction happen. So we didn't feel that was right. So we wanted that raised so that he has that ability to, that flexibility when it's something important that we want done. A transaction we want made. It just seemed that very reasonable that we needed to raise that amount in order to make it workable.
Well, again, you have one specific out of many. And using words like reasonable, et cetera, that seem to me are sufficient justification for making those changes. So I'd expect to see more detail if that, you know, if that's brought forward. Will these, the problem here is that I think we have another audit to be finishing up. We haven't seen adoption of these policies and our procedures. You know, we're required to take some time in order to notify, et cetera, of changes to the manual, et cetera. Are we going to be able to accomplish that before the next audit is due to be completed?
We're going to meet before, what, the governance meeting? Wasn't that the plan for the next meeting? It was set before you have your meeting, governance meeting, so that we could move that forward.
President Pedersen, managers, so at the April 18th workshop, we will be going through the governance manual as proposed by the two different committees and the various recommendations that were made. The intent would be to adopt at the May meeting. April 25th and 26th, ABDO will be onsite during their field work. I tentatively scheduled ABDO to present to the Audit and Finance Committee the last week of May and then to the Board in June for discussion of the audit at that time.
Just one more thing, Madam President. Are we actually going to have somebody from ABDO actually show up this year? Did we call last year? Nobody showed up.
President Pedersen, managers, I don't have information one way or another on that at this time.
I yield back, Madam President.
Okay, let's talk about the Governance Committee report. Do we have any additional comments from the Governance Committee?
So the minutes from the meeting are attached. And I don't have them memorized, so I don't. But does anybody have any questions?
Madam President, just bear with me. I was a little confused going through the minutes, the first paragraph talking about confirming payment of invoices, and there was a reference to 45 days as opposed to 60 days. I didn't quite understand what the discussion was. So could somebody enlighten me as to what the where this policy is or is being recommended ultimately, or doesn't anybody know?
President Pedersen, managers, this discussion goes back to a little over a year ago. And the new contracts that we are putting forward to our vendors and contractors include a 45-day payment language within it. The governance manual reflected 60 days, but the discussion with the Governance Committee and experience that we've had is that 45 days is adequate to get through that cycle and is less apt to be balked at by vendors.
So it's, you're saying it's, we're utilizing 45 days even though the governance manual is currently reads 60? Did I hear you correctly?
President Pedersen, managers, no, the current governance manual currently reads 30 days. We, as a board, changed the policy to 45 days. In the edits that were made in the manual, it showed 60 days, but we had discussion that 45 is adequate to meet that deadline.
Well, may I suggest that the Governance Committee and the Audit and Finance Committee revisit that because of the interplay between the statute and what our governance manual has to say and what we can put in as our as our requirements for our contracts. I know that there were previous discussions about the ability to pay even within 45 days. So I would recommend a relook at that, so. Yeah, only other thing I was interested in, I pointed out, people looking at code of conduct and some requested insertions. So I would recommend the public take a look at the minutes. Interesting, very interesting. Also, suggestions or discussions about Data Practices Act and and cost requirements and discussion. And then finally, there was this discussion about 1099s and my recollection, I mean, we've had this discussion before. I've recommended that either this district or Minnesota Watersheds, et cetera, go and ask for an opinion from the IRS as to whether or not managers are considered employees for the various purposes. Similarly with the, that's just for tax purposes, but there are other purposes. And I'm not convinced that we have the basis right now for using 1099s or otherwise claiming that managers are something other than employees. And obviously, it depends on the particular law. So I would recommend that Audit and Finance and ultimately the Governance Committee go back and relook at that issue in some detail, especially in light of the fact that the Biden administration is going to be re-implementing prior orders prior to Trump regarding classification of employees, et cetera. So with that, I'll yield back. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from any of the other managers on the Governance Committee? Hearing none? Yes. Now, we would like to receive the Citizens Advisory Committee. And it looks like we have Marilyn Torkel said here. Welcome, Marilyn.
Thank you. I'll keep this very brief. We had a wonderful presentation by the Andrew Hartman and Josh Maxwell. And we discussed that, the water quality report. And we also discussed the score your shore, both the Minnesota DNR versions and the modified Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek version. And one CAC member commented that neither score your shore versions assesses whether native plants are used. I'll let you guess who that was. We also discussed the upcoming education and outreach volunteer opportunities. Due to time constraints, we did not have a chance to review the list of CAC motions for the Board of Managers requested by Manager Cook.
Josh did let us know that when you do the creek walks, you are identifying the location of the springs. So that was one of our that one is as the creeks are walked, getting done, at least for the springs near the creeks. He also mentioned where there's a bank failure. That tends to be the location of a spring, which I thought was interesting and unfortunate. And maybe we can anticipate where those failures are going to happen and see what we can do to prevent them locating our springs. That pretty much wraps up the CAC report. Is there any questions?
Any questions, managers?
Madam President?
Yes.
So I'd like to ask, was the presentation recorded at all? I mean, you know, audio, visual, so that those of us not in attendance could listen to it?
It was recorded. Unfortunately, my understanding is that the audio was not captured. Unfortunate because I was going to review that myself to, so I could relay the discussion that we had.
Well, that's too bad. Thank you. But at least glad to hear you're trying to record those because I think it would be valuable for those of us who can't attend the CAC meetings to be able to listen to those, you know, presentations. If they were videoed, it would be even better. But, you know, certainly an audio recording would be better than nothing. So thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I don't think I had this on the whole time.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-027 to receive the committee reports.
Go ahead.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Manager Duval.
I'll second the motion to adopt Resolution 2024-2, I'm sorry, 027.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. At this point, may we have a vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We're also looking to have a board representative for the CAC meeting on April 15th. Do we have any volunteers?
I'm a volunteer.
Okay. Manager Duval says he will be at the meeting. Thank you so much. Next, we're on to the consent agenda, which from what I see is really only six C, which is the Engineers Report. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda, which is Resolution 24-028.
I'll sell move.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Thank you, Manager Duval. I believe we could go to vote.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Abstain.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
We're now on to item 7A, which is items removed from the consent agenda, the first being the March staff report. Manager Cook, you pulled this?
I did, Madam President. Thank you very much. Please give me one moment here so I can pull it up and first of all, I wasn't able to go through the entire report, but there's a couple of items I did want to address. And I think I've mentioned these before. Start on page one here. I'll try to do it quickly. It said about all state grants, final reports, et cetera. Do we have, and if we do, can we get a report or a table or whatever of, you know, the grants, grant applications? And then ultimately, you know, if, you know, we get paid those, so we have a nice summary of what grants we've requested and received. And I think that would be a good item to discuss, you know, at a workshop. Then could you explain, or somebody explain to me, the watershed-based implementation funding? Is that a Bowser funding, or somebody just briefly explain that?
President Pedersen, managers, so the water-based implementation funding is part of the one watershed, one plan for the metro area. In order to divvy up the money, since we don't, we aren't part of the one watershed, one plan, what they do is they allocate funds to each watershed area. And then we will meet, in fact, we'll meet tomorrow with the convene committee, which is all of the counties represented that's in our area, as well as all of the municipalities and local road authority. When they meet, we'll decide how we are going to how we're going to decide how to allocate those funds to which project, who's going to administer the grant, et cetera. And that, it has to be a project that is identified in either a county water, groundwater plan or our 10-year plan. So the project will come from that. So we will meet tomorrow. We'll go through the different projects that would be available. That group then will decide what project or projects will be done, and then that funding will be allocated. It'll require a 10% match. That'll be the other part of the discussion. That 10% match can be in-kind labor as well as financial. So that's how it works. And yes, it is funding from Bowser.
And kind of a similar question having to do with the SWAG surface water assessment grants and the, what do they call it, water quality and storage grants?
So the SWAG, the Surface Water Assessment Grant, President Pedersen, managers, that is an EPA grant co-administered with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. And that is used for any type of water quality modeling, monitoring that we want to do. We are working with Eden Prairie. The Metropolitan Council has decided that the Riley WAMP station, it's no longer priority water, so that they are not, no longer going to operate that WAMP station. So we are going to use that SWAG to acquire monitoring equipment to put into that WAMP station and keep it going. The other grant, the Water Quality and Water Storage Grant, that is part of the Clean Water Land Legacy Funds, that needs to go into a shovel-ready project that has to do with either flood storage or water quality benefits. And really, it's flood storage is what they're looking at. We don't have too many projects that are shovel-ready for that, the one exception being the wetland restoration that's part of the Upper Riley Creek. So we are going to apply for that grant to offset some of the costs of the wetland restoration. And that grant is due April 11th.
Thank you. That was, that was very informative. Let's see here. If we go to bottom of page two, what's our schedule for reviewing and possibly revising our permitting rules? And the reason I ask is because of, it's like Chaska and Deep Haven have their surface plans to be reviewed, unfortunately. Maybe we're too late, but I noticed we got Chan Hessen and other ones for later years.
President Pedersen, managers, right now, we don't have a defined schedule for that. It would coincide with the 10-year plan unless we advance it at a workshop or a board meeting. I would like to remind, though, that all of our cities defer to us for enforcement of our rules. In the event that one of them would like to take over, they would need to demonstrate that they have changed their local controls to be equally protective as ours. To this point, none of them have indicated any interest in doing that. Primarily for no other reason than they all have multiple watershed districts. So trying to write code that matches every watershed district can be onerous, to say the least.
So they, excuse me, if I can continue. So they defer to us. So what we have in our rules or regulations applies to them. And they they have to comply. Am I correct that they're part of their plans and they're supposed to adopt whatever local controls are necessary to make sure that that happens?
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, yes, they need to, in their plan, identify how they are going to comply. And most of them just say, we defer to Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District for administration and enforcement of the regulations. If they were going to take it on themselves, then they would need to update their code, give it to us, go through the review process for updating that.
Am I correct? Did I recall that Eden Prairie wanted to at one time, or that maybe Chan Hessen wanted to take over?
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, yes, Chan Hessen at one time had approached us two years back now. And that was when they had just gotten in their new engineering staff, and they were thinking, well, we could probably do this. After several meetings with Engineer Sobiak and myself, I think they decided that they didn't want to go down that road. So they have, I wouldn't say aborted the mission, but there's been no further discussions, and every indication from them is that they're going to continue having us enforce our rules.
Okay, thank you. I want to move on here as quickly as I can. I don't want to waste too many people's time. But the page number three, I saw the permit map. I thought that's good. Do we have a, is there a database that, or charts, et cetera, that we can go to that would, you know, kind of like have a list of the various permits, et cetera, with information in addition to the permit map? And I did, I only had a chance to look at it. I didn't have a chance to dig any deeper into it.
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, there is not so the way that permit map works is the MS forefront database automatically kicks out a new shape file every night, and then that new shape file updates our map because it's not directly linked to that database. It's going through Esri online. But if you click on the individual permits, it does have information about the permits, the type of permits, the rules that were implicated. So.
Okay, thank you. I just want to commend you for working on, apparently, one notifying landscape contractors about our rules, et cetera. And also, apparently, you're working on standard operating procedure for dealing with violations, both of which are excellent ideas. So look forward to seeing them, seeing both one notices and two-year proposed SOP. If we move down to the bottom of page three, it's a similar question about the stewardship grants. Do we, is there a page or a map on the stewardship projects? And I'm just not aware.
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, that is, now that we have completed the permits database map, that is our next map that we are going to be developing is the grants map. And we would also like to include that in that, all of the district capital projects as well.
Excellent. I'm glad you're working on that. I think I'm almost done here. Have we submitted the annual report?
President Pedersen, managers, that was going to go out today. I did not get President Pedersen managers, that was going to go out today. I did not get to it. But so no, the short answer is no, but it will be out this week.
Okay. And then the and I'm, I'm going to butcher name, Portogazi. Staff.
Not bad.
It's mapped to the shore data. Is there, I missed it. Is there access to that? Or is there a report or a table or something where we can grab so to get some information as to what's happening in our shores?
President Pedersen manager cook, I am, we met with the lake associations to run it past them initially. I am meeting with some of the presidents of the association independently over the next week or so to really kind of tailor it to. How to put it? So we are not alarming people too much or, or giving out too much personal information. And then there will be a, a public facing map that you will be, that will be interactive. We'll be able to look at your property and see the score and where it came from. So we hope within the next, by May, sometime to have that rolled out.
Well, I think that that's all excellent work and, and projects. And the last thing I'll just say here, I don't want to go any further. Yes, is that I think it would be beneficial if you could have somebody engage somebody to look at the website to see if it is in fact user friendly for most people. I, I even find it kind of challenging to find certain things. I really like the idea of the addition of the information for, you know, lake shore property owners. And that's, that's a great addition. But I think the question there, I don't know if, if you made an effort, maybe I missed it, an effort to publicize that. It's availability. Maybe I missed it, but it would be good to repeat it if, even if you have.
President Pedersen manager cook, as far as availability, we have shared it with all of the lake associations. We also brought it up at the, the meeting with them when we met with that association. But certainly we can include it in our, our next little blurb. The people.
The last item on that, if we, you know, Chan Hessen and the cities all have, I think, some, you know, publications. And I'm wondering if we could work on, you know, getting some blurbs in there, even if it costs us money. You know, to give word out, I know a lot of people do, do look at that, sorry here. Do look at those publications. So with that, I'll, I'll yield back. Thank you very much.
President Pedersen, if I, I made number that I, manager cook, thank you for pointing out a number of those things. And it actually gives me an opportunity to kind of sing Elena Portogazi's praises. She has been working really hard to get these maps out. And it's, it's nice to see the information that we have become so forward facing. So I'd like to give her and all of those that provided the data to her credit due to them.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions from any of the other managers on the staff report? And President?
Yes.
Just one, one comment that we're talking about. I think that the addition of the webpage for the lake residents, lake associations, I think is a great, excellent connection to get the community again to be looking at what we're doing. Becomes a kind of a go to place. And if they happen to wander off and look at something else that's going on, I think it's, it's good PR and it's good education.
Madam President?
Yes.
You're done? I was looking at the groundwater conservation part. Excuse me. It says develop a water conservation program. Look at Woodbury model. And I thought that Woodbury kind of gave up, gave up on some of that because of the differences between the negotiations with Department of Health and DNR. So they were getting some pushback. But I had shared with administrator, some of the work that the Lakeville community is doing. So I was wondering, as opposed to looking at the Woodbury model, whether we could maybe shift into Lakeville because they've got a pretty comprehensive program. They're saving millions of gallons of water.
President Pedersen manager craft. And yeah, it's, Woodbury did run into some issues with the Department of Health. And I think got tired of beating their head against the wall. Lakeville, Waconia is actually, has a very robust water conservation program. I think anybody who has ideas more than willing to, to take a look at them.
We saw that on the Bowser tour. It was pretty impressive. I, I think I gave you some names from that. So. There've been a lot of other things on the plate.
Any other comments?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to receive the staff report.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, manager Duval. And could we have a vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
The March regulatory report is the next item on the agenda. Manager cook, you pulled this?
Yes, I did. Thank you. First of all, I believe this is reformatted from what it has been. And I think in that basis, it's much improved. So thank you first of all for that. Well, what I really wanted to cover is if we go to, oh, if you could just add page numbers, that, that might be helpful. I just noticed that didn't have page numbers, but going to violation summaries. It, you know, in, in the first item that has, that's that wetland one. I just want to, two things, want to make sure, and I, I think there's a permit application on that, right, coming up. So, but I'll mention it here is to make sure that we're, if, if we're going to allow after the facts that we're requiring that we recoup our, our costs, you know, lawyers, you know, staff, time, et cetera, as part of this, these giving after the facts, I think we've allowed that. And we, and I think that's one thing to make sure that we put on our rules list. If we go to looking at revising rules to make sure that it's clear that you know, after the facts be conditioned upon paying costs and expenses. If I remember correctly, legal council says we can't impose fines, et cetera. I understand that, but was my understanding, we could at least recoup our costs. So that was, was one comment. And then on the, the last item on that same page of 12365 single treat, it's like we, we're just not getting any responses. I take it from that person. And I would hope that your work on the SOP, you know, this probably triggered the SOP or one of those factors, so that we have a timeline move forward. So these don't get, you know, get drug out. You know, if we don't get responses and I'm glad you're working on the SOP. And hopefully part of that will be part of these form notices and information sheets to the violators saying, hey, you know, you don't do this, this is, you know, this is what it's going to look like. Here's step one, step two, step three, step four. Hopefully that'll be, you know, a motivator. So I just, I'm glad you're working on the SOP. I, but sooner that gets done and we apply to a couple of these, I think we'd all be better off.
Yeah. President Pedersen manager cook, this is one, we talked briefly about it last month. And this is one of those where the site is, aside from the fact that they didn't get a permit, the site is in compliance. So we're trying to think of, and I'm, I'm thinking the best way to do it would just be to invoice them the, the time spent. Cause we, we have compliance, the resources are protected, but they never got the permit to do it. This is what I'm scratching about the most. Go ahead. So I'm sorry.
And, and just to mention working on, no, I'm sorry, just to mention, I mean, hopefully working with legal counsel. I don't know if our ultimate requirement is for them to tear everything out and put it back the way it was at the beginning and, and re-incur the cost. I don't know if that's a possibility, but if we could do that, that would probably get a lot of people's attention. Nobody wants to re-spend money, you know, over, over a few bucks. So hopefully work on that. But thank you very much. And I like the change format. I didn't have much time to, to, you know, look at these this week. So thank you. I yield back.
Any other comments or questions from any of the other managers on the regulatory report? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the March regulatory report.
So I'll make a motion to receive the March regulatory report.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, manager Duval. I think we can vote.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We're onto item E, which is approving permit 2023-031 for Lake Susan Park Pond reuse system intake modification. You pulled this manager cook?
Well, I pulled it because I was a little confused if, because the, the permit number is way back in, in 2023 and, and I guess why it's up before us today. And maybe I'm missing something, but if you could just cover that time gap, why we're at it here now.
President Pedersen manager cook and engineer Soviet can jump in if I misstate something. But we originally were, were going to last year work on this project and we had a, a different solution. That permit was approved, but in going back and looking at that design, we felt that this one would be a better design. So rather than reapply a permit, we're modifying the permit to accomplish that goal.
So could you summarize the change, please, just briefly?
Engineer Sobek, could you summarize the change, please, just briefly?
President Pedersen managers, the, the primary change, we revised the, the type of the structure. So rather than a circular, now it's a rectangular structure. Changed the screening a little bit on it as well, all in an effort to make it easier to construct. Pulled the structure back a little bit further from the shoreline so that it wasn't impacted as much by water from the pond. And in doing so, the quotes that were received for the project came back significantly lower than what they did in the spring of 23, thus making the project feasible to construct at this time.
Can you just, I mean, we talking orders of magnitudes of tens of thousands of dollars or?
We are talking tens of thousands of dollars.
That basis. And then what is this? So this is the permit. Then are we going out for bidding, et cetera? Or? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep. President Pedersen manager cook, we had already awarded the project and went out for bids. And I believe it was a meeting with Peterson that led to the realization that we could have a reduction in cost if we made these modifications. So engineering took and looked at it. So project was already ordered. It did go out for bid. Quotes, actually, was it quotes? It went out for quotes. Sent that to Menger, Koski.
Eight different.
Yeah, there were eight different ones. And, and this was the low, low quote.
And.
Andrew Crafton?
So this has been a problem job, right?
Correct. One of them.
Now, what, like Susan stuff, then trying to identify loading and all kinds of things. And we've had a lot of problems there. But it sounds like you're coming to a really good solution here, hopefully. We kind of went back to ground zero and reworked it. And hopefully we got a really good.
President Pedersen managers, I think one of the, a good lesson learned out of this is what, what's the saying? Don't be penny wise and dollar foolish. Had we gone ahead with some of the original thoughts and designs, the structure that we're proposing now would have essentially been built back in 2018. But we were trying to save some money, keep it within budget. And as a result, we need to make modifications now.
Good work.
Any other comments from any of the other managers? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve permit 2023-031.
So I'll make a motion to approve the permit 2023-031 with the modifications we just discussed.
A second. Thank you, manager Crafton, manager Ziegler. May we have a vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That was just to the last item that was pulled from the consent agenda, which is resolution 24-032 to enter into a cost share agreement with the Preserve Association. Manager cook, your questions or comments?
Well, yes. First of all, I think these are pretty significant numbers to be, for a project to have just go through a consent agenda. And I think when we're talking about these kinds of numbers, especially for Lake Shore, which, you know, maybe we've had other projects. I just don't recall them. I think it's worthy of having a, a summary of the process. I mean, we're going to be spending, was it $23,000 and change, I believe it is, on this project. And, and maybe, and one of the places I'm going is, is so are we going to be doing, I mean, there was some discussion in here. Are we going to be modifying our cost share process to allow for a shoreline? I didn't think we allowed that or we provided for that. And maybe I'm just confused. It won't be the first time, won't be the last time. But this struck me because it had to do with, you know, shoreline. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the concept. What I'm saying is, is this, I mean, is this part of the general grant? And are we going to be giving out grants and permits for Lake Shore? Because again, I'm not against it. I mean, we got an awful lot of Lake Shore, you know, and I, I got some of my own. And I just think before we go down this path, we need to make sure we've thought this through. So we, everybody, you know, knows what's available. What are we going to do? What are our, our parameters? And it's just that, that, you know, you know, God bless them. I give them credit. But this, you know, Preserve's Association's done a good job of, of getting project and money out of us. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. Don't get me wrong. But I get a little concerned with, what strikes me as being some concentrated efforts of getting funds, which in and of itself, it's not bad that we're paying for some of these projects, but I'm a little concerned that seems to be concentrated. And so I asked the question, are we doing enough to make sure that we have, we get the word out? That if we're going to be funding these kinds of projects, everybody has an equal playing field of at least making an application. I quite frankly, didn't think we could ever apply or anybody could apply. Forget about individuals or associations, you know, apply for, you know, funds. And I'm a little, a little concerned that you would have an association being able to get money. And it was my understanding individuals couldn't. And that didn't seem fair to me because every one of these associations is owned by a bunch of people. And, and so it, it just strikes me, this needs to have some thought process and some parameters put on it and, and really talk about what are our goals? What, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish? How far is, you know, this going to go? And, you know, what's authorized? Because I, I don't, I don't have a problem putting in an application for this kind of money. And it, you know, and it takes that kind of money, you know, to, to do one of these projects. So those are my concerns. I don't know if anybody has a response.
President Pedersen manager cook, I, oops, I would like to share my screen here. So looking at there, so this is the area in question right here. A few things, a lot to unpack in this one. The work that is being proposed is this shoreline right here. And all of the work that is being proposed is being proposed above the OHW. So really in essence, it's, it's a buffer project. The private residents can apply for a shoreline restoration that uses natives or bioengineering techniques. We don't fund rip rap or hardscape. or bioengineering techniques. We don't fund riprap or hardscape solutions. The Preserve has done an outstanding job of leveraging funds over these. We have been making a concerted effort to outreach to other associations, tunnel associations, homeowners associations, and will continue that so that more people know. We've also been meeting with cities to let the cities know when they are talking to people and out on site with with a complaint from a group that they know that we have funding available for them.
Manager Crafton, you have a comment?
Yeah. As I recall, we were getting a lot of pushback about buffers on our shoreline when we were trying to do our rules. And at one point, then the cost share program got kicked in, and it was like the first three projects were all buffers and shoreline restoration. I mean, so the people actually wanted to do that, so I didn't see a problem with homeowners. I think they've been able to apply all along, and they've, I mean, there've been some outstanding projects. One guy took everything out and redid it beautifully. So to me, the homeowner ones, you get the best bang for the buck because you've got more territory and you've got more people you're engaged in. So kudos to staff that are working on this, and thanks a lot. I I end up projects are just high quality. I think they're great.
Yes. Mr. Smith?
Madam President, a question that I have, and I'm just lapsing on cost share policy, but do we record a maintenance declaration?
Do record a maintenance declaration that required three years of maintenance, and we will offset portion of that cost for the maintenance.
Okay, so we would also then recommend in the agreement that there be a a declaration to be recorded.
Yep.
I think exhibit B would need to be tweaked.
Yep.
Manager Cook, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, I I did. Thank you. So I, one thing I I looked through this, I, are we requiring some signage? That says, you know, we've contributed, you know, to this. I think that's one of our, has been one of our requirements, although I think we kind of made exceptions when we were dealing with the golf course, maybe to my dismay, but I'll let you answer the question.
President Peterson, Manager Cook, yes, signage is required, indicating that funding came from Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek, Blorishaw District.
Well, I I didn't see it in there, but if you could just double check, make sure that it's covered in the in the grant. Thank you. Don't, maybe I ask you, I'm sorry. So is there a difference between associations? Grant, the size of the grants, et cetera, versus individuals, et cetera? And if so, can you tell us what they are?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, yes, there is. I don't have the numbers right off my hands, so I'm going to look at someone on the screen. I think it's $20,000 maximum from a HOA and $2,000 for a homeowner.
Five, $5,000.
For a homeowner, okay.
But, you know, let me ask, let me suggest, maybe that should be relooked at and on a dollar per per foot basis, because there's a whole lot of difference between getting $5,000 versus $20,000, and it doesn't take into account, you know, the size, at least as best I can tell. You you'll overspend $5,000 in a heartbeat on any type of, you know, residential lot. I I say you couldn't do it for 20, but I I could be wrong. So I I just think that that would be worth a worthwhile consideration as to whether or not this distinction should be made based upon HOA versus an individual or should be based upon lineal footage, square footage, et cetera. So that it's more, it relates more to the size of the project and the benefit of the project. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
One additional comment. I've been looking at some of this myself in an association, and one of the, one of the gray areas relates to who owns the land. There are there are HOAs where the the individual homeowner owns the land, the HOA owns none of the land. So there is a, there is somewhat of a gray area that requires some analysis, and there are other situations where the HOA owns all the land outside of the footprint of the building. So it's not totally clear cut.
President Peterson, Manager Duvel, we have run into instances where things are common interest and not owned by the HOA, in which case the one time we ran into it, we ended up not giving the grant just because it was too difficult to to record the declaration.
I have one additional comment, and that is several of the cities also offer somewhat similar grants. So most of the time, what I'm seeing is homeowners are not only applying for ours, but they're also going to the city to see whether or not they can get money from them as well.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-032 to enter in the cost share agreement with the Preserve Association, as we've just discussed.
Thank you. I'll need a second.
A second.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Abstain.
Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
We're now into item 7B, which is to accept the March Treasurer's report.
I'd like to move the March Treasurer's report for acceptance. That's been reviewed with our compliance with our internal policies and controls.
And I hear there's a second for Manager Duval. Any questions or comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
A couple of comments. First of all, I need I need to reiterate my objection to utilizing the credit card company as the vendor. And I do not believe that is a best practice. Makes it too difficult to track how much various actual vendors are are selling us. There is a solution out there, which are called purchasing cards that are available and will allow for ease of download of documentation as to the exact vendor, et cetera, speed up and and minimize time spent on on accounting on on these items. So that's, you know, that's number one. Number two, it this is kind of always kind of bugged me, you know, and I know we refer to income and expenses and income has a certain connotation in certain situations, and I'm wondering if we'd be better to be looking at receipts and dispersments because that's actually what I believe the journals are referred to as receipts and dispersments journals. So I I think that would be a better utilization of the the terminology. And I think it's the last one here. Again, I go back to this goes back to the audit and finance, and hopefully they look at the policies and decide is the balance sheet, okay, is that cash or accrual or some combination and make it clear, you know, what it is, because my understanding is we accrue all kinds of expenses. We were supposed to just have cash for receipts, yet we have tax receivable delinquencies, which under a cash, you know, basis, we wouldn't include those. So I just asked the Audit and Finance Committee to go back and look at that and just come out and say, this is how we're doing it and have it spelled out, whatever way it is, so that it's clear what type of accounting methodology or hybrid we're using on on the balance sheets. And one thing here. The other question, I noticed there was a lot of software, you know, subscriptions, et cetera. A lot of individual ones. I don't know if administration has looked into some site licenses, multiple licenses, et cetera, enterprise licenses with Microsoft, et cetera, and whether or not that, since we have the number of people we do have, whether or not that would lower our our software licensing costs. But I think generally it's worthwhile to do it, and that just leads me, and I bring it up again, I mean, I I have to repeat, I think we need an IT consultant to at least advise us on what's out there. I know our statutes call for, you know, private, you know, security briefings, and they, and we should have one. And we should have somebody look at our security because, you know, almost every day I get a feed on who, you know, is getting attacked, who got attacked. I think there were 30 million records or something just yesterday or today. So that just ties into this this issue about, you know, are we spending money on the right kind of software, particularly, you know, security software, and what is our security mechanisms? Because I'm not interested in taking the heat if you know, we get hacked or or things stop working, and I'm also concerned about making sure we have control over documentation. And especially, you know, given individual laptops, et cetera. So I would like to see what our policy actually is on on software security, maintenance, receipts, et cetera. So I I'm finished. Thank you very much.
President?
Yes, Manager Crafton?
Yeah. So every one of the credit card receipts is accounted for and checked up, so that's all verified. We do use a modified cash approach, so some stuff is accrual, but that's, we've used that same process for decades at least. What's the other point? I can't remember. Yeah, I mean. Oh. So at some point, we don't want to micromanage what staff's doing. I mean, I have full faith in what they're doing. They they get software as it's required, as needed. We did try an IT person for a while or outfit, and it caused more problems than it was worth. So I trust that staff and and our administrator can figure out what they want, and they can do what they need so they can be flexible and get done what they need to do. So that was just my sense of things.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Any other comments from the other managers?
No, I think, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Madam President, just
Yes.
slight rebuttal. Thank you very much. All due respect to Manager Crafton, my knowledge, she's not an IT expert. What we use an IT person for was based on my experience, ill managed, ill suited for the job. You can go audit all day long, and it still doesn't give you an idea of what what vendors, et cetera, we are using or should be using, and empty go check out everyone is not necessarily the, you know, the best approach. So you know, I've said it before, I'll repeat it again. I believe in Ronald Reagan's, you know, philosophy, trust, you know, but verify on this basis, and this is not the standard of accounting that I think is a best accounting practice to be applied in this situation, especially over the years since we were grabbing more and more and more going using credit cards over, you know, actual cash check, you know, dispersments and you know, the 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 famous words of the people when, you know, they find out somebody's embezzled or whatever it is, is, well, I trusted them. That, you know, that's not going to hold up very well, certainly in the court of public opinion. If we get hit by, whether it be dishonest people or, you know, cyber attacks, et cetera. So with that, I I'll yield. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the March Treasurer's report. May we have a vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Next, I'm looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 24-029 to approve paying of the bills.
I saw a move.
Thank you, Manager Crafton.
I'll second.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. Do we have any questions or comments on this before we vote? Hearing none, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item is to approve permit 2024-006, Lake Lucy Lane Water Course and Wetland Restoration as presented in the board section of the report. Would you like to address this, Mr. Jeffrey?
President Peterson, managers, I will just introduce this as, this was an after fact permit brought to us by the City of Chan, has some violation on the site. The Swanses are yes, they are present tonight. They have been cooperative and working with us throughout to get to this. If you'd like more description of the solution being provided, I will turn that over to Engineer Sobek, who did the review for the project.
Managers, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that
Sure, sounds great.
you can see online as well. Managers, what what we have on the first plan sheet here that was provided is it shows a nice aerial of the the pond, the wetland area, essentially before some excavation that happened and the wetland occurred. So this would be early 2022, say. What the applicants did without a permit is they went ahead and they excavated a channel running east west along here, sort of north south along this area, and then also continued some excavation in this downstream water course. They've worked very closely with the Watershed District, with the Technical Advisory Committee over during 2023 to come up with a plan to go in and restore the wetland and then naturalize the water course as well. What that plan includes is essentially using the materials that were excavated from this ditched area, putting it back in the ditch and naturalizing it with native vegetation for this east wedge. This the north south ditch will be left the way it is because it's actually started to revegetate nicely. But in order to restore the water levels in the wetland, they're proposing a a structure, essentially a rock check dam with a clay core through it so water doesn't seep through it at the outlet, at the proper elevation to restore the the hydrology for this wetland. Over time, this north south excavated area will sediment in with sediment coming in off of the roadways from the north. And then to restore the channel, as it works its way down to the south, they are proposing three additional rock check dams with some bank grading to cut the banks back a little bit in there, and then restoring that all with native vegetation. That, are there questions?
President Peterson, managers, I would like to add one key item. The north south ditch has been in existence for as far back as the aerial photography goes, so that was not a new excavation. That was maintenance of the existing channel that was there. That is important to the topic.
Any questions from any of the managers, comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook?
So are we? It wasn't terribly clear. We're being compensated for our time, legal expense, et cetera, having to deal with this being an after the fact permit application?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, the one of the recommendations is for the reimbursement and establishment of the permit fee deposit to recoup and recover those costs.
Thank you.
So you're, excuse me, so your answer is, yes, we're going to be reimbursed for our costs as a condition to granting an after the fact of permit. Well, my own, my own comment is, I know, coming up with the the board action, I think, as in other one- well, it, my own, my own comment is, I know, coming up with the, the board action, um, I think, well, as in other ones, the board action needs to reflect that, you know, we're approving an after the fact application. Uh, so nobody is under any misunderstanding as to exactly what we're, what we're doing here.
Manager Crafton?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody that worked on this because I think we had a really good outcome from what I can tell you. Allowing it to, to fill in gradually as, you know, you know, I mean, that seemed like a really good solution to me. But the whole project, I thought with the natives and everything was really well done. So I appreciate the cooperation from everybody that worked really hard on this.
Any other comments?
One quick question, Madam President. So, um, there's still work to be done, right?
That's correct.
I mean, it's after the fact from the standpoint that the work was started and didn't meet the requirements. And this brings it into meeting the requirement.
Yeah, President Pedersen, Managers, I probably should have, uh, stated that differently. They did work prior without a permit. This permit is to repair things back to the, the conditions. So, it's not an after the fact, this permit itself is not an after the fact. The incidence of needing it is after the fact that the original work occurred without a permit.
But there's
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
If, you know, not to split hairs here, but this work would not have to be done, nor this permit in itself would not have to be issued if the application was timely made and, and dealt with. Um, you know, this is only necessitated by the fact that work was done without a, without a permit. So it, it's, it, 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 it's remedial, but it's still an after the fact permit to do any work because it's a totally result of having done work with that required permit that they did not get. So I, I, in my opinion, it's still after the fact permit. And maybe there actually should be two, you know, after the fact to do some work and another permit to do, you know, remedial work. But I don't think we have to go through that at this point. But to call it not, you know, like, everything's good. We just get a permit, you know, and did it in the ordinary course is not accurate. And that's why I think it's important to call this an after the fact permit. The fact that it involves remedial work, um, is necessitated because of the actions of the permit application. And I, I just want to make clear. I mean, I, I'm very thankful that we had cooperation, you know, on this matter. But, you know, the fact is, is, you know, this was all required because, you know, we didn't go through the proper processes to begin with. And now we had to do work that might not have been done at all. And clearly we have not restored it to where it was. We hope it will get there or even be better. But as I understand this, we are not putting it back the way it was. And so it is in fact, after the fact, an attempt to, um, ameliorate, uh, the, the activities that were done without a permit. I, I rest.
Any other questions or comments from any of the other managers?
I'll belabor this, but, I mean, the DNR played a big role in this too, insisting that certain things get done in a certain way, right? So that was a huge piece of, of what happened.
President Pedersen, Managers, I think the applicant got a, a, um, crash course in dealing with four different entities and all of the hoops required to try and make that all align. Um, probably the reason that this permit is before us so late was that they were working with the technical evaluation panel, DNR Bowser and the Carver County SWCD to get a restoration plan that they would accept and then came to us with it. So, yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve from that twenty-two, forty-four dash zero, so six, uh, Lake Lucy Water Course, uh, Wetland Restoration as presented, uh, to the board.
Thank you. We have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Manager Duval. Uh, looks like we can vote, please, Mr. Smith.
President?
Yes, Mr. Cook.
Uh, I move to amend the proposed resolution um, by inserting on the fourth line of the proposed board action, after the words resolve that, uh, and insert after the fact.
Any objections from the motion or second?
I don't object. No objection.
Okay, great. A vote, please, Mr. Smith.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next, we're looking to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero, three, zero, amending the, um, regular meeting date from the first of May for our Board of Managers to May eighth.
So I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero, three, zero, as you stated.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Thank you, Manager Duval. Uh, any questions, comments before we vote?
Madam President, uh, what's the reason for changing the date?
President Pedersen, Managers, um, my daughter has a playoff game on the first. I could either take vacation and not be present at the meeting or we could move it. And I'm open to either one. Um, but I felt, uh, given some of the matters that have been before the Board of Late, that it would be prudent for me to be at the meeting. And I would love to see my daughter.
I, I, you know, so I, I certainly appreciate that, but I'd also would appreciate the fact that, you know, we, you know, could have been informed of that or all of us could have been informed of that at the get-go or as part of the, you know, a, a memo. And so that's one comment. But second comment is, I believe that, uh, under the, uh, statute, this now becomes a special meeting, uh, since we already approved the regular scheduled meetings. And so I believe we need to make sure that we have the, uh, agenda laid out in sufficient time as required by the open meeting law.
Mr. Smith?
Madam President, um, this would not be a special meeting. You would simply be amending your regular meeting schedule.
Thank you.
Oh, Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
All due respect to Mr. Smith, I don't believe that he is correctly interpreting the statute or the ability to amend the general meeting schedule. Uh, his interpretation would, uh, basically eliminate all special meetings. So, you know, we can always hash that out, you know, as another one of our issues. But, uh, I, I, I stand convinced that this is going to be a special meeting and we're changing, uh, the date and the time. And I think the statute's pretty specific.
I believe, yes, Manager Crafton?
President Pedersen, um, this isn't the first time we've done this. We've done this before. We need to be flexible enough to do this. But especially in terms of, um, the accounting piece and going through all the receipts, this is a much better date. It gives us more time to, to get everything done that we need to get done and get verified. So I'm very much in favor of this, of moving the date. It, we've done this before. It's not unusual.
Thank you, Manager Crafton.
Madam President, I, I must respond.
Mr. Cook?
You know, when I hear what Manager Crafton said, that's like saying, you know, it's okay that I, I killed a person. They were going to die tomorrow of cancer anyhow. That is not how you go about doing the statutes. Two wrongs don't make a right. I've said this analogy before, just because everybody else jumps off the bridge, okay, and kills themselves, doesn't mean that we do that. You know, it's a special meeting, but if, you know, like I said, we've got plenty of other issues that we can, we can hash out. Um, and this certainly isn't going to be, uh, the only one. So we should, this should be set as a special meeting. And we have the, the requisite number of days to go and put together the agenda and notice it, et cetera.
Mr. Smith, I believe we could, uh, go for a vote on the motion, please.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Andrew Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Next, we're looking at adopting Resolution twenty-four dash zero, three, one, authorizing bar task order oh, four, oh, B, to administrate a Lake Lotus alum application.
I move, I move to accept Resolution twenty-four dash zero, three, one, authorizing the bar task order of zero, four, zero, B, administering the Lotus Lake, um, application.
Thank you, Manager Duval.
Second.
Second, Manager Crafton. Any questions or comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Am I correct that, uh, a copy of the task order was not posted to this meeting's website, nor is it attached to the resolution? Or am I missing something?
I'm just looking. No, President Pedersen, Managers, it is not attached to this.
So I ask, would it be possible to pull that up so that we can see that? Just so we understand what we would be approving?
Manager, President Pedersen?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
So we had a pretty thorough
Discussion.
discussion of this and presentation by Joe Bishop and that this was pretty well laid out what we were doing.
That was my recollection as well.
But I got it here. I don't have it. I don't have it. Hmm. Engineer Sobiak, was it included in the materials? I, I don't know. So I'll just go there.
I have it if you want me to share.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Managers, I'll, I'll walk you through the task order really quick.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
The first section is, is the background section. Um, the background section, uh, Mr. Bishop covered in quite detail at the last board meeting. Um, in, in summary, if I were to summarize it, uh, we're looking at doing alum applications to the four areas highlighted on the map. This area forty and area ten would be new treatment areas. Area thirty and area fifty would be a slightly smaller footprint than the original treatment at the first half of the dose. Um, and that frees up funds to be able to apply alum to these other locations. So then what we're looking at is we're looking at basically finalizing that dosing areas and dosing rates with task one. With task two, we're developing, uh, project specifications and bidding documents to be, uh, put out for bid, solicit bids from contractors. Uh, three would be providing oversight administration while the application is occurring and doing some monitoring as well. And then task four is, is post-monitoring, um, in twenty-four and twenty-five to see how effective the application would be. Uh, overall, for the, this task order, we're looking at a cost not to exceed forty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. And the individual tasks are broken down on the table in front of you.
Well, Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Uh, my recollection is, is that there was discussion about, uh, the testing and monitoring in some of the shallow areas because of the wake boat activity. And, um, my recollection was that, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe, uh, but that, uh, Mr. Bishop was at least going to be contemplating, uh, you know, those issues. And, um, so I had expected to receive something or some comments regarding that, uh, that, that prior discussion. I'll just reiterate, my concern here is, is, so everybody knows, I mean, I live on Lotus Lake. Um, excuse me, you know, I, as I recall, the reports by our staff was that there was an increase in phosphorus levels in the shallower areas. Um, uh, I'm going to generally assume that that is attributable to the fact that we, that wake boats create tsunami-type wakes that scour the bottom, stir up the sediment. And I obviously have, yeah, I don't have the, uh, technical measurements, but I certainly have, uh, videotape and pictures showing the disturbance to the bottom and the, uh, disturbance of the water, water column. And, uh, the question was how far out are we going to go to have these treatments? Uh, where should they be in light of this? Um, and there was this, you know, to me, some confusing discussion. You put it in the deeper ends. But if we put it there, well, the wake boats won't bother it. But, um, the areas where the treatments are going to be aren't that deep. And I believe there are plenty of studies. There's at least three studies out there showing that, you know, prop wash wakes go, uh, twenty feet or more. Okay, especially as these boats are, are getting bigger. So I was expecting at least some commentary on, uh, the coring, et cetera. And by my last comment, can we go to the, the schedule for the payments or the costs, et cetera? Uh, again, I, so the, the expense for post-alum treatment, data analysis and reporting, um, I mean, I don't know if it's high or low, but in relationship to the fact that, um, you know, it's about the cost of developing the, the bids, et cetera, but substantially more than final dosing and strategy, which I would assume would involve some core sampling and, and data analysis. I'm just, it, it seems to me to be a little out of sync. Can Mr. Sobiak address that?
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, um, the finalized dose, uh, amount and strategy, a lot of that work has already been complete. Um, and that is what Mr. Bishop presented on at the last board meeting. Uh, that's why there's a smaller number underneath that line item. With respect to the, the, uh, post-alum treatment data and analysis, that does, um, there's, there's a lot more sediment cores that are going to be collected. Um, there'll be the four locations, uh, talking about slicing them at different L of, or different depths so that there's more analysis that's needed. Um, was there another question there, Manager Cook, that I missed?
Well, you know, you, I don't know if there was another question in there, but in my head, the one just popped up was, uh, over what period of time and where are you going to be doing this analysis? And the reason I ask again is because of the, the, at least appearances of the damage or the impact these wakes can have in shall, shallower, uh, areas of the lake. And I, I've said it before, it seems to me that a, a testing analysis, uh, uh, program for this lake should include sampling in the shallower areas. Uh, so we have a, a, a handle on basically, um, you know, where the phosphorus is. I mean, the phosphorus needed, these, this lake needs to be done before the wake boats get out there. When the wake boats are out there, then in the fall after it settles down and, and see what happens. Because I think we're going to find that, uh, a good deal of our phosphorus is going to be generated there. And if it's, my understanding is correct, it slides downhill into the deeper parts. So ultimately it can have an adverse effect on your, um, on your actual alum treatment, even if you limited it to the deeper areas. So, um, can you tell me what's going to be entailed in the data analysis? I mean, what kind of borings and samplings are we going to be getting part of this project?
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, the, there will be sediment cores collected at each of the alum locations, the four separate locations. Um, the, right now, the current plan is to have the alum applied in the fall of twenty-four with the data collection, the, the coring's being collected in the spring of, of twenty-five. So we get a good baseline to see where the alum sits, where, you know, after it had a full winter to sit without any action from boats, waves, wind, et cetera. The plan then would be to go back in twenty-twenty-six and do additional sediment cores to see if the alum has in fact migrated and to, again, assess how effective the treatment again, assess how effective the treatment has been after essentially a, a full year plus of boating activity on the lake.
And how many borings or sampling areas will we have? I mean, more than one in those areas, or several, or?
I believe it'll be up to five.
It's five. You know, it just doesn't strike to me to be sufficient number to really get a good handle on, uh, you know, the treatment or the impact in, including of these wake boats, et cetera. And I think we, I think it would be a good idea to reconsider that, and especially look at the reports and data that are out there, especially from, I think there's Maine, Vermont, uh, there's one, Canada, I think there's even one, Oregon, and believe there's one in Australia or New Zealand, and, and see if really this is enough sampling for us to really reach some decent conclusions. So I'd just like to, I just suggest that that be considered in going forward with this plan. Because unfortunately, unlike, like Riley, we don't, we, we don't have much in the way of a zebra mussel population, any how to, to clean it up. So I, I yield back to this point. Thank you.
Any other comments from any of the other managers?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
President Peterson. Yeah, um, well, first of all, Joe Bishop's an expert in this field, but he, I, he stressed that the alum's going to bind up the phosphorus. So there's, there's that element that gave me a whole lot of comfort with what we're, exactly what we're doing. The other thing is, I guess to Josh or whoever, I'm assuming we would be sampling the phosphorus level in that lake, so we would know as part of, like we get in the water report, in our report. So we will know exactly what's going on, but um, I don't think we're abandoning anything. I think the fact that it's going to bind up is going to help too. So those are things we need to remember.
Any other questions or comments? Um, I don't believe we have a motion to adopt this.
We do.
We did.
We do. Okay. Then I think we're ready to vote.
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Uh, we are on to the additional item that Manager Cook added, which was data requests. Manager Cook.
Uh, yes, I submitted a data request for the data pertaining to the Administrator Jeffrey's review. I received a response from him, which in my view was not compliant with the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, saying that he didn't have in possession, his possession, those reports. I don't believe the law requires it to be in his possession, but if they're in the possession of the district, which my understanding includes any staff member, any employee, any manager, that they are in his possession. And, and since the board is not the responsible authority, he should be complying with my data request. And so he said to bring it up with the board, and that's what I'm doing right now.
Mr. Smith.
Madam President, Managers, Manager Cook is correct in that if the data is in possession of the district, it is, um, accessible and, and can be produced pursuant to a data practices request. In this case, the question is, we're dealing with private personnel data, and that data is only available to the subject of the data and otherwise internally within the district for those who have a reasonable need to have access to the data. And the specific language in the statute is the work duties that reasonably require access. This is an issue that's come before the board in previous reviews. And the issue for the board is whether you believe that each manager individually, that the duties as manager require that you have access to the data that Manager Cook is requesting, those being the individual reports or reviews. So in the past, the board has concluded that as managers, you do not have, your duties do not reasonably require access to that information. And so it's the same issue to put before you now.
So I would like to make a motion that we keep individual comments on the district administrators' performance review private, as we have in past years.
I'll second the motion, and I'll include staff reviews. The individual managers do not need to see the staff reviews.
I'm okay with that.
I guess my only comment is, you've already reported out exactly what the results were for the meeting, so I'm not clear on.
What administrator?
Yeah. Yeah. That was just a comment.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Oh, uh, I believe, you know, I guess, you know, we can see, I believe Attorney Smith basically is giving you erroneous advice. You are not the responsible authority, and but by taking this, I'm going to assume that you have taken over that determination as to being the responsible authority. So if you want to continue down this path, you know, you certainly can. And I will have more comments on this review when I have the managers' report. And I don't think you should be approving this type of resolution because it's not within your curfew in the first place. And even if it was, either your determination is erroneous, or your method of going about it is not in compliance with the statute.
I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor. May we take a roll call vote?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Next item is the discussion items. That would be the Riley Creek Wamp Station.
President Peterson, Managers, we talked about this briefly during the staff report, that the, should actually read Riley Creek Wamp Station. The Riley Creek Wamp Station, that council is no longer going to be operating that Wamp Station. However, we feel that given the work that we're doing within the Riley Creek Corridor, it's important data to have. The City of Eden Prairie agrees with us. We met with the City of Eden Prairie. They are amicable to splitting the cost of the data. The data, the collection equipment is about ninety-five hundred dollars, so roughly forty-seven hundred each, and offsetting the cost of sampling as well. An agreement is being drafted. That agreement will be brought before the managers, hopefully at the May meeting, so that we can get that equipment acquired and, and installed. And that was really all I had on that. I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's proceed to member reports. First item would be manager reports. Does anybody have a manager report?
So I'd like to just let everyone know, I am signed up to go to the, they call it, the Southern Lakes Conference that's put on by ISG down in Rochester. I'm just going for one day, but yeah, that's ten dollars, and I'll, I'll pay that and, and the gas there, down there and back, so.
Thank you.
When is that, President?
I'm sorry?
When is that being held?
Um, I'll here, take a look.
Okay. Thank you.
It's down in Rochester.
Listen, my brother.
Any other manager reports?
Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Uh, so I'll start out here with the fact of Administrator Jeffrey's review. I think it's imperative for me to let the public know that the process was clearly not consistent with best management practices. Been doing this a long time. This is probably the worst process that, you know, I've experienced in all my tenure, but particularly my tenure, you know, in connection with being a manager of this board. We started out by talking about increases before we had even had opportunity to discuss the various managers' comments that, the discussion, we, we didn't even discuss those or review those before bringing in Administrator Jeffrey, at which point you, Madam President, proceeded to read some compilation, apparently, of other managers' reports. That compilation is not sufficient to be able to discern what each manager's views were, and why or how they might have come up with their views on those, on those reviews. And so that's, that's just, I mean, you know, a nonstarter from best practice on, on that basis. Further, we were not, I in particular was not given any opportunity to ask any questions of Mr. Jeffrey, whether it was to be about his past work, his future work, what, what he, his plans were, whether professionally with the district, et cetera, his outside activities having to do with water and water districts. All that being said, and let alone we give a six percent, you know, increase when, you know, your statement was inflation was one point four or five percent. I don't know if that was correct. And I guess I don't know, other than having been in the military, I don't know that anybody was ever getting perfect reviews. And the only reason you did that in the military is because if somebody didn't get it, you knew they weren't going to stay in the military very long. I don't think we're in the military, but then again, I, I could be wrong. And I think that, you know, giving the highest grade across the board while ignoring the fact that he has difficulties paying attention to detail.
Are you sure this is my view?
Manager.
Yes, Mr. Smith. Excuse me.
Excuse me. I'm pretty sure this is my review you are now talking about in public.
I have the right under the statute to discuss this information.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I, I want to draw a distinction for the managers. It is certainly a legitimate thing to voice a concern about general process of a review, but the review was held in closed session as provided by the statute. And you should not, by comments about the substance of the review, circumvent that closed session discussion. So the, the privacy of the data and of the, the evaluation is a concern. General comments about process, which heretofore Manager Cook's comments were addressing, I think, are, are in order and appropriate in this setting, but to then go into the substance of the closed session, I think, is, is a problem, and I would caution against that.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just make a comment also. I guess I object to the characterization that, that we should be subjected to critique or review by other managers as to what our evaluation was. This is an individual evaluation based on each manager's interaction with the administrator is not subject necessarily to discussion or debate. This was a, a review.
Thank you, Manager Duval.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Yes, and Manager Cook.
Point of order, I had.
Please keep your comments
I had the floor, madam.
To the process.
Madam, I had the floor.
Thank you. I would appreciate you keeping your, your comments to the process, not to your feelings about the district administrator. Thank you.
Well, again, there is no law against it, okay, on that basis. And if Mr. Smith would want to follow the law or the rules, I've already invited him to do that. He has not done that on that basis. I think the statute's pretty clear, okay? And again, we can, we can have this debate in court if we, if we have to, but this process was atrocious. Mr. Jeffrey didn't make any comments. We weren't able to ask him, or at least I wasn't able to ask him about his past performance, what his plans were, et cetera. There was no self-evaluation as we've done in before. There was no three sixty evaluation, which I would hope that most people trained in HR know that that basically is the, I guess, gold standard for reviews. And quite frankly, as I said before, we need an HR consultant because none of us have the training or experience to perform these types of reviews. And so I, I object to the, to the method and the means and the conclusions reached, but particularly the failure to provide the, your reviews so that I can have sufficient information on which to evaluate how much weight I would want to put on it, and not be able to ask questions so that I can determine how much weight I would want to put on each person's review. And I don't know how many reviews any of you've done on that basis of professionals, et cetera, but I think we need advice, and I've been saying this now for six, six years, or, well, however many years it is, you know, on that basis. But I think if the public needs to know that this process is, is poor at best, and not in meeting with best management practices, and we need advice as to how to perform that. So the last thing I mentioned is that I've also made data requests, other data requests to Mr. Jeffrey. Also, as I understand, this is what the statute says, private contractors, I have not received responses to my data requests, and I ask that I get prompt response to my data requests. So at this point, I will yield back.
Thank you. Manager Crafton.
I'd like to make a comment. This, we've used this process since probably around 2013. It has served us well. We even hired a coach one year at least, and used the same process, essentially, what, at a greater cost of maybe ten grand at least. And four managers on this board find, are satisfied with the process and find it's fulfilling the needs of, of the review. So I just, I think we need to make that clear, that four managers at least do not share this opinion. We are satisfied with the process, and that needed to be said.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Any other comments? No.
Well, Madam President, unless there's somebody else, I just need my rebuttal.
Yes, Manager Cook.
In, in rebutting, Manager Crafton, you don't know what you don't know. Again, repeat, you know, neither the experience, okay, nor the training in HR matters. And again, I hate to say it again, just because you've done something wrong a thousand times, doesn't make it right. And this is way too often a response that I keep hearing. Well, we've done it forever. That doesn't make it right. And we should be doing the right thing, and the right thing at a minimum is hiring an HR consultant. The one we had was not the best on that basis. And the final point is, there is no way the process we went through with Mr. Jeffrey the last time was anywhere near, any way, shape, or form the process that we went through on prior reviews. And I'm sure there's recordings out there, and we can go through them and, and review those. So I, I yield back and finish.
Do we have any other manager reports?
No.
I have one thing I'd like to bring.
Yes, Manager Crafton.
All right. So we're moving ahead with E-HAP. It's been presented to both the CAC and the managers. One of the things that's been driving my interest in this is the need for more infiltration to recharge our creeks and lakes, and et cetera. There are climate change action plans and frameworks out there that are focused on greenhouse gas emissions. For me, what we're doing with E-HAP is taking a step forward and looking at things around water quality and water management and that water cycle. That's so important and is another driver for climate change. So I would like to suggest at some point that we go through a process of developing a climate action framework, discussions, you have speakers come in, whatever, and see about aligning that with the if, about aligning that with the water cycle as an important piece of what we're doing as they move the E-HAP forward. Because I think that's an important context for climate change and what's happening to us. So anyway, that's my thought, I thought I would express it.
Thank you, Manager Crafton.
So just a comment on, on Manager Crafton's. I did attend a online seminar a couple of weeks ago, and there's a number of people from California to Maine that are doing something similar to our E-HAP. They're calling it something else, though. It's, I'll have to dig it up and let you know. But anyway, it's along the same lines and they're recognizing that, you know, the, the water cycle is a very important thing to understand. And infiltration is probably the best way to reduce flooding and to maintain a water supply that's sustainable.
Thanks, good.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just follow up on that. I attended a couple of meetings over the, in the mid-March, end of March. Just curious, as a resident of the City of Minnetoka, I listened to the city of Minnetoka, or the state of the city of Minnetoka, and there was presentation put on by the mayor and various staff people, and the staff were present for discussion afterwards. But that was a central theme of, of, of the new focus of the city of Minnetoka was dealing with, with water and how it, how it impacted virtually everything that's going on in the city. And, and so I met with a city council member, again, talking about the same kinds of things. It, it seems like it's on everybody's mind on, in dealing with current issues. And it doesn't matter what the issue is, it always comes down to some notion of the sustainability or water or some combination. So I met with a natural resource manager, I think.
Leslie Etka.
Administrator Jeffrey knows, I think she was connected with the watershed.
Leslie Etka.
Yeah, Leslie. So she nodded her head in, in appreciation for being there and, and I, and the few words that I put out in conversation. And then I went to another meeting, which was a similar version, but it was a Met Council, council meeting. It was the state of the region, and that was at the Hopkins Center for the Arts, and that was about a week and a half ago. So I met two of the Met Council, council members, and again, talking in general about what the watershed is doing and E-HAP. And again, it's one of those things where you're kind of mixing and matching in the conversation to make contacts and that sort of thing. And there was, seemed to be great interest and, and, and just in the one-on-one conversations, but also in the presentation, the, the chairman of the Met Council spoke a lot on, with, again, the central themes of sustainability and the notion of water and how, how it impacts everything we're dealing with in our lives. Anyway, just comments, and, and it seems like there's a growing presence in the, in everybody at different levels around us, and, and that is encouraging to me that, that we're addressing, that we're starting to address some of the commonality and the, the central themes that we have to deal with. So you.
Thank you.
Did I add one more thing?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
Yeah, so the land use press procedures or management practices that we're using really influence the micro water cycle, and that micro water cycle affects the macro. So this is really a key to what we're doing and what we're about as a watershed organization. So anyway, thanks for those comments. It's great to hear that more people are looking at this.
I think I, I concur with all the comments. I think it's just a really super direction we're going in. I'd like to sort of think that we're one of the leaders here in the state in pursuing this idea and seeing what we can do to, to move water protection forward.
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I, I think one thing that, you know, well, I, I happen to be a scientist, okay? That's how I was trained. I think what we're forgetting in a lot of these programs, though, is, is that we're not dealing with the underlying facts, and those underlying facts in large part driven by what properties we have, what facilities are already on the land. And there, in, the bottom line is, there's a limited amount that we can do. And if you know, any of you had the presentation by Carver County and the USGA, US Geological Service, GS, about what underlies our district. There's some parts where there's permeability, et cetera, but there's a large part where it doesn't exist. And I think we have, we can't lose sight of the fact that we have a certain set of facts that we have to deal with, and they shape what we can or should be responding to. And we don't have a set of facts that allow us to apply some of these concepts, some areas we can, some we can't. But this is why I keep going back to, we need to gather the facts, just like the groundwater. We need to gather the facts. What do we have before? What did our studies have? Where did we have wells? Once we have a handle on those facts, then you come up, you formulate about what problem are we trying to solve or what are we trying to figure out? And then you go and develop a plan to fill in the data that you don't have. And it seems to me that this groundwater process just misses the mark scientifically. Okay, it misses the mark scientifically. And I'm sorry to say, there are people out there, you know, they'll do work just to do work. And part of our job is to make sure, though, it makes sense and fits into what are our ultimate goals. And I never heard us come up with one, either goals and particularly a problem that we have that we're trying to address, and what facts are we trying to gather to address what issue? It doesn't do it. And so I'm afraid we're going to be spending money on a problem that may not exist or a problem that we don't want to solve. And the one thing we can't do is we don't have enough money to go and buy up every piece of vacant land that exists, and certainly not enough money to buy up every existing land to go put in another feature. So I, I, you know, it's for good reason, but you got to have a plan that makes scientific sense. This is how you go about it. You don't have, you know, what's his name from the university, just jumping out there and say, well, I just want to take a bunch of measurements. No, they have a, you have a issue or a potential issue or a goal that you are trying to find an answer to because that's what's important. And that's my concern that I express about the groundwater process we're going through, and it's also my concern that we're going to run into with the E-HAP, okay? And my last comment on this was, we had Chan Hessen in here to discuss their new city center thing. Well, I didn't hear anybody jumping down and saying, well, we got to deal with climate change. I suggested, you know what, you're going to do with climate change, you got to have solar panels, you got to look at geothermal, and in my view, they were just poo-pooed. So why are we going to build a structure? Are we allowing people to build a structure, okay, that's not addressing, what I understand you guys are saying, are the issue, which is effect of climate change? Well, you know, the only way you fix it is by preventing or minimizing climate change. And you do that with every step, every building, you know, that you have. There's no reason why the city center in Chan Hessen shouldn't be the beacon for how you do a city center that is climate change friendly or at least climate change neutral. And I didn't see that in any of the plans. If we want to do something about climate change, that's where we need to go. That is where we need to go. So I, I yield.
Thank you.
All due respect, I guess it is.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. I believe that we're on to the administrator report. Is there?
There is one item I'd like to share with everyone. President Pedersen, managers, as of 3:31 today, we closed on these Ring Road property. Nope, that'll do it.
Okay, thank you. A legal counsel report?
No further report.
No further report. Okay, at this juncture, it looks like we have what's coming up, which is the audit on June 5th.
President Pedersen, managers, I briefly talked about the schedule beforehand. ABDO will be on site the end of April. May, we will take the draft report and go before the Audit and Finance Committee, make comments to ABDO, bring ABDO report to the board. It's June 5th meeting to make a decision of what we want to do at that time. That's really it.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes. Manager Cook?
I want to confirm, are we having a workshop on April 17th, is it?
April 18th, correct, yes.
April 18th?
Yep, that is correct.
April 18th, our offices, of course.
Yep.
Okay.
At the same time as the CAC meeting?
That's on the 15th.
That's on the, I think that's on the.
Yeah, it's on a Monday, Thursday.
Yes, that's on the 15th.
Okay, good.
The workshop is on April 18th, Thursday.
Right.
April 18th.
Do you have any other comments on the upcoming events?
Just the, L.R. Mahan is extremely busy doing a number of different things, as you can see on the list beforehand, different partners on all of them. I won't go through them all in detail, but there's a lot on tap. And I don't, well, I guess I do kind of mean that tongue in cheek. The step on tap is, is pretty exciting. She worked with the City of Eden Prairie on this, and we're, it's, they'll bring people in to present to STEM educators on different things that the watershed district is doing. First one will be presented at by our own Josh Maxwell.
Uh huh.
Will do us proud.
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
I have a question for Administrator Jeffrey. I, I know you have the, the report for, you know, permitting, et cetera. Do you have a sense as to the level of permit request we may be seeing this year? Do you think it's up or down from last year?
We are, President Pedersen, Manager Cook, we are at 23 right now, 30 right now.
30.
30, which is a little bit above what we had seen in previous years at this time, but not drastically over it. So I, I suspect we'll be somewhere in that same range of 80 permits by the end of the year. We tend to see a really big spike February through June, and then it starts to tailor off, paper off.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I think I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. And a vote, please.
Manager Crafton?
Yes, and I would like to mention that it's 8:915.
Andrew Duval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedersen?
Yes. Thank you all for attending. Look forward to seeing you on the 18th.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, staff.